Should I be able to see the screen?
I'm here. I have thirty seconds. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's called the November tenth meeting of the Quincy School District Board of Directors. Meeting in order, will you all please rise me and join me in the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Sean, can you hear me because I cannot hear what's going on?
Yeah, he, I think he muted it for the chorus of the pledge of allegiance, but we can hear you now, Nick. Rita, can you hear him?
All right.
All right. Do we have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Sean.
I'm moved to adopt the agenda.
I second.
All right, moved and seconded, we'll adopt, all those in favor of adopting today's agenda?
Aye.
I don't, I still don't think she can hear us, I don't know, Sean, if you want to try to give her a call on the side?
Yeah, I'll give her her text here real quick.
Okay, great, so onto the consent agenda, that makes that easy. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Right, motion second, do we have any, a, any questions on the consent agenda?
I have one on contracts and agreement.
Great, glad you can hear us, good, go ahead Rita.
It's bullet point four point six point one E S D dash Q S D, it's about the limitless learning market or network. I wanna know, how is it that this is effective on ten one and we're voting out it on eleven ten?
Rita, you know, it's, it's okay for it to be on the agenda, but what that is, it's a grant that, a five thousand dollar grant that we received from the E S D. So it did go into effect October first, we've had this grant the last three years, in fact, it was, I think, ten thousand dollars last year, it's five thousand dollars this year. And, you know, inadvertently, it doesn't hurt to be on the agenda, but it didn't necessarily need to be on the agenda because it's a grant, it's five thousand dollars that we receive.
That's what Tia thought, but she wasn't sure, so I said, I just asked.
Yeah, that's what it is.
That's all I have.
That one's going the other way, which is nice.
All right, any further questions? And I do, oh, sorry, did you not question Rita? Okay, and do you see we are student board reps, and would you guys like to take your advisory vote on approving the consent agenda today?
Yeah, two yes, Chad.
All right, I'm glad I'm not the only one that this is a work in progress for, all right, and then do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I guess we are. Adopting. Aye.
Aye.
All right, on to reports, Pioneer Elementary reports.
All right, well, I'm Alicia Porter, and I'm the principal at Pioneer Elementary, I'm happy to be here tonight, talking to you guys about our and all the things that we're doing at our school, I have a few kids that are gonna talk, the teacher, Mrs. Henry here with me, that will talk about one of our math initiatives. But I will start by going over our reading goals, so our reading and math goals are aligned to growth for students, so typical and high growth is what we're looking at for our multilingual learners, and our students qualified or identified as Hispanic Latino, those are the categories that were identified in by the state for improvement.
Yes, will you go tell JoJo where we are?
Oh, is he out there? Yeah, come on in.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Making eye contact. Yeah, so our goals that we had last year, we're continuing those same goals, and so I'm just gonna report to you on those goals, and then what the outcomes have been from our data that we're seeing so far last year, and then into the school year. And if you have any questions, you know, stop me along the way, because there's always, you know, there's always a lot of information. So these goals are coming from our school improvement plan, and which our plan is based off of the, our needs assessment that we do yearly, looking at all the different data that we have, and setting goals around the areas we're identified for improvement, and that what our data is telling us. And our data is telling us that those categories that were identified in, those are the areas that we need to continue to make growth in. And so our reading goal is the same, where we want to see growth for our students identified as Hispanic and Latino, increasing from fifty-five to eighty percent, showing typical or high growth, and then for multilingual learner group, increasing from sixty-seven percent at showing typical or high growth on our star assessment to eighty percent. And we ended the year making some pretty good growth in ELA, where we went from fifty-five to percent to sixty-four percent in our students identified as Hispanic Latino, and then our multilingual group, we ended at sixty-six percent showing typical or high growth. So we, you know, kinda went back a percentage point in that area, but we are tracking all of our students and have interventions assigned for all of our kids that, oh yeah.
It's fifty-five to eighty percent, like, that's, that's a big jump.
Yeah, so that's over, over three years, is what we're looking at, so that's why we're keeping those same goals, because that is a huge jump. So we're just trying to do, you know, take a little bit off of those numbers every year to get towards that eighty percent.
For a year, you want to do?
This is only second year, so we just started it last year, we hadn't been identified for improvement before for Pioneer, so last year was our first year of being identified for improvement, so it was kind of, we still have always done school improvement planning based on the needs assessment, the areas the state said that we need to work on, those are the areas that we already knew we needed to improve in, and that we're working towards, you know, getting better in those areas, like ELA maths, and then for those subgroups.
Could you describe what is typical of my group?
Yeah, absolutely, I, I thought that question might come up, came, might come up, so I did a little bit of work on this, and we kind of tried to make it more understandable, because it is kind of confusing. So it's calculated the percentile, so we, you get them for SBA and for the STAR assessment, and it's calculated based on a student's or a SHAT test, or it could be more test over pen as well, but it's how they do compared to their academic peers at that time, and then the percentage of growth that they make, right, so if it's a zero to ninety-nine percentile, say a kid scores in the fiftieth percentile, they scored higher than forty-nine other kids that were in that same growth category. So if you see that area in the middle that says growth categories, if you look at low growth, we would kind of chunk it up into thirds, this is what they do for low, typical, and high, so if your growth percentile is thirty-four percent or lower, then you're making low growth. Right, and then, but if you're between thirty-four and sixty-six percent, that would be what we would consider typical, although over fifty is pretty good, but we would consider that typical growth, and then sixty-seven percent to a hundred would be making high growth, and it's all based on, there's not like any specific number you can get to, it's all based on how those kids in that same academic group score, and it's nation, like nationwide, it's not just Pioneer or Quincy School District. So that kind of explains it a little better, but, well, I don't know, it's better, but that's a little, an explanation that I was able to pull. But do you guys have any questions on that, does that make sense?
I do. So, looking at like your goal for Hispanic and Latino students to eventually by next year, that they mature, get eighty percent. We're on year two, we reached sixty-four percent this year, so we're short sixteen, so our goal is to increase growth of sixty percent of that metric.
For the rest of this year and the following year, yeah.
But is your starting, like, your starting data, was it fifty-five?
Yes.
Or sixty-seven point eight?
So it's, so for the Hispanic Latino group, because Hispanic Latino multilingual learners, that's not the same group of students, those are different groups of students. Not all students who are Hispanic Latino are multilingual learners, right, like, my kids identify as Hispanic Latino, but they're not multilingual learners. So that group of Hispanic Latino, they went from fifty-five percent to sixty-four percent, NELA, where the multilingual group is at the sixty-six percent.
But you're starting, like, I'm guessing you started your goal based off where your data was?
Yes, so if you look under the twenty-four, twenty-five ELA growth goal, so that first bullet, Hispanic Latino students increased from fifty-five to eighty, so they were at fifty-five percent, and then multilingual was starting at sixty-seven percent, increasing to eighty percent, so we were already getting pretty good growth out of our multilingual learners on the STAR assessment, so we just wanted to keep increasing that number.
Yeah, you definitely could see the growth in the Hispanic, so just to make sure I'm understanding, for multilingual learners, that one went down a little bit.
A percentile point, yeah, it did, it dropped one percentile point on the STAR ELA assessment.
And I'm not gonna report, but I'll just add there, one, one thing, you know, when we're monitoring growth versus proficiency, with growth, you're accountable for every kid. Where proficiency, if I'm just monitoring my proficient, my students who are at threes, I'm not necessarily having to be accountable for every student. You know, there's certain groups of students where I could leave off completely, you know, maybe some of our students who are low level ones, they might not show any growth, and they might not become proficient, and I'm only talking about proficiency, those students are accounted for, similarly with our enrichment kid, or students who are enrichment. You can have a high, you know, a level four enrichment student or a high cal student, but they still might not show any growth. So it's really important, too, that we're monitoring and all students that grow the metric, so every student is expected to meet that particular growth, or they are as an individual learner. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and for every student, we do track growth, every student is tracking their own progress on the STAR, with their teacher, of course, facilitating that on the STAR ELA in math, where they started, you know, there's like the trend line, so they can look and see where they're at, if they're making that growth, to get to what STAR considers expected growth for them, so yeah, that is a really good point, Dr. Bergman, that we're looking for growth, a year or more of growth for every student. These are just the categories that we are identified in by the state for improvement, and when we focus on these categories, we notice that every category really does improve. And so our, our new ELA strategy that we're working on this year is called RACE, and it's an acronym for Restate the Question, Answer the Question, Site Evidence, and Explain the Evidence. So building wide, from kindergarten through fifth grade, there's different variations of it, right, like kindergarten, we just do restate and answer the question, where all the way up to fifth grade, they're elaborating and explaining their evidence. So we're implementing this building wide, everyone's using the same color coding, and that, it's been pretty successful so far, in that everyone's doing it, and we're monitoring that. We also are doing a new, I didn't put this in here, but a new strategy for equitable calling practices, which is called Q triple S A, but really, it's just asking a question.
This is a big acronym.
Yeah, Q triple S A, yeah, so. But we're, we ask a question, make sure everybody's ready, have them talk to a partner, and then you ask if they're ready to, to respond, and then you randomly call some kind of way, so that you're making sure everyone's really accountable, and it really does increase engagement with students and accountability. Everyone knows they have to be paying attention so that they can answer a question, right? I know, now I see the students looking at me like, yeah, we just really love that one. Everyone loves random calling. So something else that we're working on on the back page for math. So math is an area definitely at Pioneer and District by that we're working really hard on, there's lots of different strategies that we're doing right now. But one that you've heard about previously from Mrs. Via Pondo at George, was about the building thinking classrooms work, and we're starting that also here at Pioneer, we started last year and are working on that this year. And I have Mrs. Andrea Henry here, she's an amazing kindergarten teacher at Pioneer, and she's gonna talk to you a little bit about how she has done this in her classroom and what she has seen as a result. Hi, I'm, sorry, I don't do good with podiums, so. Kindergarten teacher, so in my classroom, I use the building thinking classrooms strategy, we started it halfway through last year, and so when you walk into my classroom, we have these whiteboards, and they're uphanging, so the whole idea is that you're using vertical non-permanent surfaces, so kids can wipe away stuff as we go. The first time we did it, we started with a Skittles problem, so they had like two red Skittles and two blue Skittles, and they put them together, and they were solving basic addition story problems. My purpose during that time is just to facilitate, and just to walk around and get kids to think without me giving them the answers, which is so awesome. When you're going about it, you're really getting kids from being stagnant, and me giving them their responses, or telling them the procedure, to getting them to be active thinkers of the process, and getting them to solve it in a way that works best for them. And so when we were doing it, we started with just basic Skittles, story problems as they answer, we would give them more, and what we had planned for like twenty minutes ended up being almost an hour of math, they were super engaged. They showed lots of perseverance, my quietest students were the students who took over and helped, because they have to share a pen, so they have to collaborate, talk to each other, and it was just such a cool experience, because by the end, almost every single kid in my class was solving three, like, addition story problems, and doing second grade math within an hour, and it was the most family that used it, and that's something we continue to use in my classroom. So we're now to the point where we're doing, because we're now starting again, we're doing like self-story problems, so I'll say like, somebody got hurt, how are we gonna solve this problem? Or can you finish the story we just read, or add a different ending? So it really gets them more engaged, and it gives me a chance to step back and let them take control, which is really what I want them to be doing. So, and the kids don't wanna stop, like, at the end of math time, they wanna keep going, they don't wanna quit, they want more problems, they wanna keep going. There's so many components to it, like, it's random grouping, and it really helps break down barriers, because, you know, we all know, you know, a lot of time, kids will think, I'm, I'm not good at math, or other kids will think, you know, think the ones with the answers, and it really puts every kid in position where they have to participate, you only have three or four at every board, then just like up all in the classroom. And they get to see each others, which is the biggest thing, too, like, at the beginning, they were all like, you're cheating, and you're looking at mine, and it was like, no, we want that, because sometimes kids will get stuck, and so we want them to be able to have access to the resources around them, including their peers, so it was really cool. Thank you. Good night, drive safely. Just drive back to Nashville. And so looking at that data at the top there, sorry, Sean, please scroll back up a little bit. So our goal for math is also to increase typical and high growth for multilingual learners, and for students identifying as Hispanic Latino, we're tracking that through STAR, and we have really targeted intervention and instruction, so we're doing the building thinking classrooms, but we also have a separate block added into our day for targeted math, so every teacher's working on intervention where the students are at, pulling them for small groups, some kids are doing workplaces, and they just like rotate around working on the skills that they need. So we found that last year to be pretty beneficial, and we worked on fractions last year, and we pulled our data, we actually saw an increase in our fraction strand for our SBA. Do you guys have any questions on that? All right, so the next part, Lainey Maverick, would you guys come on up, I have Lainey Weber and Maverick Bishop here, and they are going to talk to us about something that, oops, sorry, that we're working on with our attendance incentives. What do you do for attendance?
The green bars.
Just what you practiced today.
The green bars are basically, yeah, two kids, you still get one, and if you have three, you don't get one, and it helps our attendance by, everyone wants to be there to earn it. And there's levels, so about five or six is a sticker you gotta pick up. And eight is a three-year eraser, ten is fifteen-minute recants, and eighteen is the chip part, so.
You can start eating between six and seven.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Like what Lainey said, it helped a lot of kids come to school, a lot of kids were missing one day, and then they would come back the next day and say, then I went shopping with my parents.
Yeah, they were always going shopping.
They were like, I'm going somewhere, and so they'd be in here. They would go other places, probably to avoid school. Now it, now they want to come here, except, they wanna have better attendance, so they can unuse.
Got chalkies, and they wanna me to bring the baskets, so you guys can see the baskets, those are the things they get a pick, but there you go.
So you can put this in the classroom, or is it just for your own class?
So, own class.
And every morning, they'll go put up whether or not their class has ninety percent of their students present, so if they're taking homework in twenty, you can have two kids absent and earn a green bars. And I did not pump this, this is from Whitney, Greg can look at this at H L A, then we started it this year, and we've seen a slight increase, you know, went from seventy to seventy-three percent of our students in October, because I was, I was really excited to go see it, then it was a three percent increase, but it's more than anecdotal evidence that we're getting, you know, from kids who are wanting to come more, and that we haven't, you know, had great attendance, are coming to school. You know, and there's things like if kids have weekly appointments, or some of our students, you know, that are medically fragile, they have weekly appointments, they are not counted in the numbers of orders, so if you look at things like that, it's one of those. All right, you guys, all right, thank you, have a good rest of your night there, buddy. Thanks, guys, they're pretty awesome. All right, and then Moises Corvias is one of our awesome third grade students. Yeah, sure. See you later. Okay, don't forget your ring there. Okay.
Hi, my name is Moises.
All right, so this is Moises Corvias, he is one of our third grade students, he is dressed in autumn often, he's wearing a husky sweater, his older brother is going to U DUB, and his sister is now sixth grade or seventh grade, middle school. Seventh grader, and so she came through in year two, and he came to talk about our Jack Rabbit Foot Reward here, so what, what is that, what's our reward here?
Jack Rabbit fee are things you could earn by showing respect, making good decisions, and solving problems, and you earn them by, like, doing what I just said. And if you, you could get, what you earn is, you earn them, you earn prizes, like, if you get one hundred and forty, it's electronic day. Then, I like them because they help the kids listen, and they help them, then.
So what do you guys get, why, what are they called, remember?
They're rabbit's balls.
A rabbit foot.
And you have them on your desk right now, and there's stamps of the rabbit's foot on there.
So you get them just yourself, or who gets them?
The class.
The whole class?
So like in specialist, or like music, if you be good teacher, give you one, if you get like forty, you're getting on the stage, yeah.
Eat on the stage, it's very funny, their favorite one is a picnic on the stage of their own lunch, eating it on the stage and listening to music, and so there's all different kinds of.
And the people on, people, on, in the lunchroom get jealous.
See you sitting up there, right? So do you think that it's helped your classmates?
At times.
At times.
At times, it does, sometime, it does.
Great, well, thank you so much, Moises, there's something to hear off that, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Oh, we're still sitting in the room, so.
Yeah.
I know it's been a little long, but I thought it would be fun to have some of the kids come in and talk, so it also says on the bottom, I know somebody asked about attendance before. We also call families when students are absent, at three, unexcused, we send a letter home, and we follow up with a call, and then at five, unexcused, in a month, we do a meeting with families, and so last week during conference week, I had three or four different attendance meetings, and, you know, of course, I won't tell you people's names or anything like that, but just some of the results of the meetings that we had were awesome, I mean, we, one family, we were able to figure out how she could download the Smart Take app and track her kids, so she can get them on the bus, another family talked about how their kids have witnessed domestic violence, and they're going through such a hard time, and so we hooked them up with our school's social worker, who helped them get, you know, actually be seen by Colleen's mom, Pam Dugan, she is available to see kids through her private practice that she has, and she comes in a day a week, and we have now these six kids who see her, who really need support, and so it was just really, you know, those can be really impactful, and we have those meetings, and so we really try to do that, so we're trying to do the incentives, the positive, pulling families in to talk with them, and last week during conferences, we only have two families out of all three hundred students who we are trying, and we have appointments to reschedule, and once we get those two, we'll have a hundred percent of our families who attended conferences, so our parents really care, they show up, they want to be here for their kids, and they wanna part. Want to be here for their kids and they wanna partner with us, so.
I mean, I like your layout. It's super easy to follow and I can compare the data between the years, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
Um I don't have a question specific for like time year. I'd love to one day, those people could see district wide. How like your demographics compare, especially with the neighborhood schools. Um but overall, great progress and I could definitely attest to just the experience with your teachers. Um as an anecdote. My nephew, just the way, actually Mrs. Henry, right? You really have like child, child development experts here and the way they handle parent teacher conferences is very impressive. So I wanna give you kudos for that as well.
Thank you. Yeah, we have awesome, awesome teachers and awesome kids and families. Like I said, they, parents really. Want to know how to help their kids and what they can do to support them. And we're, we wanna partner with them and find out about their child because they're there, you know, like it says in our mission, they are their expert on their child. So we need to get as much information from parents as we can.
Thank you.
Emily, you're welcome. Thanks, guys.
Thanks so much, Alicia. Alright, and. We're on to the FFA report and Harley Pro demonstration, all days not to be in person.
Ms. Dowers? Well, we'll stay, we'll stay here for the report and then you guys do your demo. We're sitting here.
We'll do the demo over there. So you guys are good wherever you're at.
Might be introduced, uh.
Yes. I'm on it. I'm on here, Kendall. Okay, so thanks for seeing us tonight. Uh this is Kendall Dowers. Uh she's our, our newest hire at high school. Uh she's. Uh she's taken Rod's place. Uh and it was really fun to be able to. Take her to the national convention. This was her first time going and it might be my last time going, so. It's kind of a, it's kind of a neat little transition, so uh it was really fun to take these kids um to the, to the national convention and. Um what we've tried to do is to get them to develop more skills and. Fill their toolbox up with things that they could get from a, a broader scope than what we can, we can provide for them here at Quincy. So um. I don't know, Kendall, did you have anything that you wanted to say? So I'm kinda put her on the spot here, but it prepared a, a presentation for you guys. Um talking with Nick, he said that he wanted to, to do a little parliamentary procedure demonstration. Um and. That was kinda tricky in itself because parliamentary procedure is such a convoluted, in-depth contest and. So the kids that went to nationals, um four of them are in the Harley competition. Um and the other four, I said, you're doing it, so. So so they, they learned, they learned some stuff and, and I think that they're, um I'm pretty sure, I know April um has, has done it before. Um so you know, it's not such a big stretch when I've already told Emma and Sadie that they are gonna do it this year. For the most part, um we've got some, um some experience just uh starting at three ten this afternoon to get ready for today. Uh so uh they're gonna give you the little presentation and then they'll, they'll set up over there and they've got a motion to do. There's twenty-five different motions. Um that can be demonstrated in parliamentary procedure. Each one of them has their own rules of debate and which type of vote, so. We're not gonna really get into that. We're just gonna, the kids are gonna give you a little spiel, explain it and then. Um I'd like for you guys just to come up with a typical agenda item, um something just out of the books. It's a lot easier to do, to, to handle a motion or a topic that's fresh than to try to practice something because it gets old and stale. So the, the more impromptu it is actually, the easier it is. I can come up with something if there isn't, if there isn't anything that you guys would like for them to handle, but. Um they'll just handle that with a motion that I asked for them to demonstrate that uh for their presentation, okay? So guys, let's go ahead and dive into your deal. I'm gonna, we'll sit down over here.
Okay, so we did a recap of it. So our timeline of activities, Tuesday was entirely a travel day. We had gone up at two thirty. And then gone into Las Vegas, had an eight hour um delay. Great time, travel day. Um Wednesday was when we started the fund. We had gone to the National Bakersfield College Expo first. We explored all like the booths, the colleges, all of the little meets that, all the little things that they had there. They had, they were giving out free stuff. They were giving out. Stuff about college admissions. It was just so much things packed into one um, one spot. And then right after the expo, we had visited the Speedway Museum. I don't know if you guys have been there before. It's the Indianapolis, yeah, Speedway Museum. It's the big, it's like a two mile track around. It's super cool. And then right after, we had dinner at Long Corin Steakhouse. Thursday, we had opening session at eight in the morning and right after that, we had gone straight to the expo where we kept exploring. And we also attended leadership workshops. So there were workshops that kind of boosted our knowing of like leadership and like. Knowing your self-worth and just like some of those where we get information that we've never had, I guess. Um. Then right after that, we had the hospital radio at six thirty. It was super fun. It was only for the fake kids, so there was a lot of kids there. And then Friday, it was the last day for um the college expo and we hit that last time all the things that we have, we hadn't gotten to, we had finished. And then we attended more leadership workshops. We, I'd say we had at least two each day. Um. And then right after, we watched the parliamentary procedure finals. A so in um a, a town here in Washington got, ended up getting second place in nationals. Um and then we had dinner at Red Robin and then even bowling problem. And then Saturday, we had gone to the opening session at seven in the morning for the American degree ceremony, which Brody Wallace had ended up getting his American degree. And right after that, it was straight to the airport for travel. Yeah.
Uh good evening, everyone. My name is Fernando Valderras and I am this year's District Nine FFA Secretary. And I was also one of the members that was fortunate enough to go on this trip. So um one of my favorite memories um of the whole trip was actually getting to go um bowling against George Washington. Um the story behind that is in FFA, the treasurer, their emblem is George Washington. So it was only right for me to dress up as George Washington and go bowling. Other memorable experiences were getting to talk to people from forty-eight out of the fifty states as well as Puerto Rico. Watching the parliamentary procedure finals and visiting the Indianapolis Speedway and also getting to explore the Ag Expo. Like I said before, the expo just had so many different things about agriculture, just around the whole country, all these different schools. And it was just really a cool experience. Some of the key points that I got from the workshops I attended was learning how to become a good mentor. Being a good mentor is having good listening skills and being able to give advice that will lead people in the right direction. Especially for all of us that are officers, we're in a position where we have to uh help guide people that don't know what they wanna do. Um and being able to guide them in a good direction is one of the things we need to learn and that was one of the things that was said at the workshop. Uh being able to attend the national convention was an op, was an amazing opportunity that I had and I encourage all of our members that were in FFA to. Become more active so that uh the, the next time we go on this trip, they have the chance to go and experience this for themselves as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Trey. I'm our chapter's secretary. My favorite memory from Indy was being able to go to the Speedway. It was really cool. We gotta do a lap around. We didn't go very fast because we were like a little van thing and walked through the museum. There was a simulator at the museum and that made me realize I should never drive a race car or a car. Um with a very close second, we met a famous rodeo tris, or rodeo or Tristan Parker and we gotta take a picture with him. Um my favorite workshop I got to do is called Cultivating Connections. This workshop talked a lot about how everyone has different strengths and that's such a good thing. Another thing they talked about is growing your connections with people and how those can be like a long chain down the road. Getting to go to this convention is something I'm very grateful for and I learned a lot of leadership skills and how it's important to be a leader and grow up well. Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Eva Jimenez and I'm our chapter's reporter. So my favorite memory was just spending it with you guys and just going bowling for Halloween. So I enjoyed the workshops because you meet so many people and I actually left the workshop with a couple of people and another girl named people. So. So they helped me learn a lot about communicating with others. So some key points in the workshops I attended were how you have a purpose in life. And without you, things wouldn't function properly. So it reminded me that everyone and yourself, you met. So the other workshop I went to was how you should be kind in every situation because you don't know what anyone could be going through. Um even if they don't deserve it, you don't know what they're going through, so just spread kindness. And then the last one I went to was how to become a better leader. So I left that workshop with more qualities, like a better understanding of what qualities you should have as a leader. Thank you.
I'm like sure, I'm the vice president. My favorite memory uh from the national convention was going to the radio. Cause I gotta spend it with all my friends, plus we gotta meet new people and bond with them from different states and everything. Um my favorite workshop that I learned was even if someone's like treats you disrespectfully, you should always treat them. With respect because you never know if you need someone they know or them down the road. Uh some key takeaways was networking. You always gotta make sure you're talking to new people and uh expanding yourself. But yeah, I was very grateful that the FFA alumni helped us, our group. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen and I am the chapter president. My favorite memory of the ninety-eighth National FFA Convention was watching the parliamentary procedure and prepared public speaking finals. This was enjoyable for me as being able to learn and take from other people who come from very different environments. But enjoy the same things as me, really opened my eyes and to new perspectives. I was able to learn things from act policy and law to proper communication in teams. I would say that these are definitely things that will follow me into my future. And one of the workshops I attended was called The Power of Questions. This workshop taught many and like taught me more about how just asking one question can get you far. I believe that questions are truly the key to solving problems. When conflict arises, questioning rather than assuming can stop it from going further. Overall, national convention was a great trip that challenged me, but also helped me see great things. I got to learn more about my teammates and also more about myself. I experienced new things that I never thought I would actually get to experience. I am so thankful for everyone who made this trip happen, my teammates and advisors.
My name is Aliana Kipania. I'm our chapter's treasurer. So something that was super fun during the uh convention and stuff was when we had gone bowling and Wallace beat us way too much. I don't. Was um during one of the sessions, uh there was a speaker from Los Angeles. His name was Eric Johnson. He had given a speech about um. Self-luminating beliefs and it really inspired me to like, you know, step out of my box and be um, be out there more and kinda like. Not take in what everyone's saying and just be okay with myself. Um one of the workshops I attended was Leadership is Influence. It really shifted how I saw myself and others. Because leadership isn't just like a one-size-fits-all. There's different ways to lead. There's people that. Use motivation and inspiring vision to lead, but there's all, there's also others that have structures and deadlines that they wanna meet. So both are valuable and recognizing your own natural style is the first step in growing into an even stronger leader. I really took that with me. Um I'm very thankful that I got the opportunity to be attend the National FFA Convention. It was fun. I met way too many people. I have, oh, I don't remember half the names I met. Um and I learned like, um because I'm a senior, you know, colleges, colleges and colleges. Um I finally found like a college that I can see myself going to. Missouri State is really nice. It's just nice to like be able to put my foot out there a little more than, you know, just in Washington. So yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Silva. I'm our chapter Sentinel. Um one of my favorite person trips is the rodeo. It was honestly like the best ones I've ever been to. The crowd was full of energy and so they basically like let the whole thing be, they like reserved it for FFA members, so that was amazing. Um and it was just so much fun having all those FFA members there supporting the rodeo and stuff like that. Um it really made the trip amazing and something I'll always remember. One of the biggest lessons I took from the workshops that I went to was how important it is for everyone to give their best effort. Um they referred to our team as a machine. Um if one part doesn't work right, the whole team kinda suffers. And it showed me how my actions and the other people's actions on our team um affect others. It reminded me that teamwork is built off trust, effort and everyone's contribution. Um one of the best parts of the trip was meeting uh people out of forty-eight of fifty states. It's. You're in this big thing, looking at all the shops and there's just, you see someone from Texas, someone from Arizona. It's crazy. And they had a paper we got them to sign. Out of all fifty states, so we gotta talk to people and from every state. It was, it was really cool. Um. Everyone was friendly and welcoming and I loved hearing their stories, especially learning about their FFA experiences in different states. It's crazy how similar, but also different it is at the same time. Um meeting so many new, um meeting so many new people made the trip exciting and very unforgettable. Thank you.
Um hi, I'm Sage Shagger. I am not uh a officer, but I am a student advisor. For our chapter. Something that was fun that I experienced was the Indianapolis Speedway because you got to see the old cars. Got to kiss the bricks. It was really cool. And all the history was really interesting. One thing that really stuck out was being, what to me was the fact that being uncomfortable can actually help you later on because. Prepare you for the future. Um another thing that I learned was you need to treat everybody with kindness now. Because you may meet them down the road and if you don't respect them, they don't respect you. Um the last thing that I took away from the workshops that I went to was that if you're not the loudest leader in the room, it doesn't mean that you're not a leader, so be a leader. It was amazing to be able to look around and feel the different states and chapters everywhere. Everybody was so friendly and nice. And it was also cool to see how each state has such a big hand in our nation's food and animal production. Thank you.
The next slide is just pictures of um the. I have one of, of all of one kids. He's like, woo.
Did they let him wear his boots or did he have to wear? Which, which two states are?
Yes, yes, I wanna know what two states, not go.
New, uh New Hampshire and Virgin Island. Yes.
You were the US group.
New Hampshire.
Probably just like find them.
I wanted to give you guys a big thank you and thank you to the alumni, our school board, advisors and Quincy FFA chapter. And our Quincy High School ASB for helping us fund and helping us plan and letting us go on this trip, which was an amazing trip. Very, 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 thank you.
I, I mean, first off, you guys are so inspiring. Like your confidence, your leadership, your words, everything is just so, so loud and proud. I'm very impressed. I'm, I'm just very curious, what are you guys' grades?
Like what's, like, like grade?
Are you sure you wanna know that?
I'm a senior. I'm a senior. I'm a salt.
Senior.
Senior.
I'm a junior.
So the seniors, for the seniors, do you have goals uh into going into agriculture someday?
I wanna be a agricultural educator, so.
Any other question?
Anything, anything that falls into it.
No, thank you. Awesome.
I know, onto the parliamentary things. I'm really curious about those. You know, you can mute her from your side, right?
Or Rita, just so you know, Rita, you're, you're unmuted.
Rita, we can hear everything happening each other.
Is the dog okay?
Is the dog, say hello to whoever rang your doorbell.
I was thinking.
Good evening, members of the school board. We are here today to present the fundamental basics of parliamentary procedure, which is a set of rules used in meetings to ensure order, fairness and efficiency. It's used in many organizations including FFA, student councils and school boards to help members make group decisions in an organized way. In parliamentary procedure, we use a book known as Robert's Rules of Borders. I have it right here. It's very huge. I recommend reading it.
Are there like some cheat sheet versions?
They do have some for you, Casey. The Robert's Rules of Order for dummies. Really paraphrased, it's actually pretty good.
The purpose of par- parliamentary procedure is simple, to make sure everyone has an equal voice. Meetings run smoothly, decisions are, decisions are made fairly, protects the rights of all members, the majority, the minority. And even those who wish to not speak while keeping order during the discussion.
The fundamental guideline of a meeting is called agenda. Oftentimes agendas, items require that the assembly make a decision. Then it becomes an action item, action items must be presented in a form of a main motion. So it can be recorded and the decision can be made by the group, which when a member wants to group to take an action, they make a main motion.
After the main motion is um moved, there must be a second, so it kinda ensures that every, that someone wants to talk about it. And if it doesn't get seconded, it just dies completely. Yeah, and then right after, the chair repeats the motion back and it's up for de- for debate, yeah.
Now that the motion is on the floor, debate is where you can discuss the pros and cons before you vote. The maker of the motion has the first right to debate always. There's three parts to the debate, the opening statement, the body of your debate and your conclusion. Um there are rules when you debate. First, each member may speak twice for ten minutes on each motion. Um it must be germane or related to the motion. Uh debates must be respectful per- and professional, no personal attacks or side conversations. Um the chairperson or Karen um remains neutral and keeps, keeps order and recognizes the speakers.
Sometimes a motion needs a small change before it's perfect. That's where amendments come in, there are four ways to amend, you can add words, strike out words, insert words or strike out and insert words.
To make an amendment, the member has to stand up and say, I move to amend, bye. Then someone has to second it. The chair then opens debate uh to the amendment only. If passed, then the motion is changed to what the amendment was being debated. If not, it will remain the same. When debating an amendment, you only debate about the amendment, not the main motion.
Right after debate is closed, we go straight into voting. So, oh, sorry. So the chair kinda, right after the debate, she goes, are we ready for the question? The question is on the motion that you had made and right after, we go into e- either a voice vote or a rising vote. A voice vote is either a or nay, and it's a simple majority. And then for a standing vote, it's when a member's right to speak has been taken from them. So it's a super majority, it's a two thirds, but to summarize, it's a super majority.
The chairperson also called the presiding officer maintains order and ensures that rules are followed. They recognize members, state motions and announce the result of the vote. One tap, announcement of decision or the seat assembly. Two taps, cause their meeting to order. Three taps, signals members to rise. A series of sharp taps brings order to a noisy room in order to start a meeting.
So what, what happens is, it's just kinda like, it's like in the middle of, of, in the middle of an agenda, okay? So like we could be in the middle of a meeting and then there is, in the, in the contest, the kids are giving a main motion. Okay, and then all of the motions that they are supposed to demonstrate have to pertain to that, that main motion, okay? So in other words, it used to be back in the old days, um we could practice for two months on. I moved at the Quincy FFA, I'm camp out at Quincy Lakes, you know, and then everybody knows what they're gonna say, everybody has their debates. And it's just like a whole bunch of prepared speeches, well, that's called can, right? You can't go in there with anything planned, you gotta be original, it is, the kids will see the main motion. And they have one minute to look at the main motion and their required motion to figure out how they're gonna do it. And then also on their card, they're gonna know the motions of their teammates, cause they can't make those motions, cause teammates have to make those motions. And in the contest, everybody has to make two motions, their required motion on the card plus another motion. That is not on the card before someone else makes the motion. So there's some competition amongst the teammates themselves to be able to get the motions in. And there's only twenty five motions that they can make, so. It gets, it gets pretty, it gets pretty dicey, but today what we're gonna do was we're just gonna go nice and easy. Uh the kids decided that they wanted to just a main motion and an amendment and then come down off the amendment and vote, okay? So there's not gonna be any, any of these other um pretty, pretty, pretty cool motions that can be done to transact business. Um so you guys will be able to see some of them that are gonna be demonstrated. But like I said before, it's better if they don't know what it is. Does anybody have something that would be something that the kids could?
Change, change the school, change the Quincy School District logo.
I move that we change the Quincy, or the Quincy School District logo.
Yeah, the mascot, sorry, the mascot.
I move that we change the Quincy mascot.
Do you wanna know what it's going to, don't you?
Well.
No, give us options.
Do you wanna give, do you want to, to, to another mascot?
You guys can think about that then, okay, so that's your main motion, I move that we change the Quincy mascot, right? Okay, so you got your minute, think about it.
Very good start.
No, you got your minute, I'll tell you when your minute's up.
Is there any new business?
Madam Chairman.
Aliana.
I move that we change our Quincy School District mascot.
It is moved and seconded that we change the Quincy School District mascot, this motion is debated.
I object to the consideration of question.
The consideration of the question is subjected to, shall we consider the question? All those in favor considering the question, please signify by rising. Thank you, P C C U. All opposed, please rise. Thank you, P C C U, the ayes have it, we will consider the question. Is there any debate on the main motion? Aliana.
I wish for everyone to get behind this, this motion, because I mean, our jackrabbit has been our mascot for years. And honestly, we need something new. We have, we're up against, our rivals are the tigers, we should be, we should be something like the rhinos, you know, I don't know, something that kinda like. We're, we're bigger than them, so therefore encourage my fellow members to get behind this motion.
I am extremely against this main motion. The history behind the Quincy Jackrabbit has been here for years, basically since Quincy has even existed, and I think the history behind it is great. Yeah, it's not very intimidating and, but the thing is, it, it's unique. There's no other schools that are the jackrabbits and it just completely makes us stand out from all the rest, so I encourage my members to please vote down on this motion.
I am strongly against this motion, I feel like we should keep our jackrabbit. We've had it for so many years, plus I have personally seen our prep rallies and our prep assemblies, we've got the best mascot ever. And we've got our songs down to a T already with our jackrabbit involved, so please vote down on this motion.
Madam Chairman.
April.
I wish to speak against the motion because we already have uniforms that have jackrabbits all over them, all, all our school is covered in jackrabbits. So therefore, I urge the members to vote against the motion.
I, I rise to the question of the parliamentary.
Say your question.
What's the vote to pass this motion?
This motion requires a simple majority vote. Is there any for debate?
I move to take a five minute recess to discuss matters informally.
Second.
It is moved that's going to take a five minute recess to discuss matters informally, this, is there any amendments? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor of taking a five minute recess to discuss matters informally, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it, the motion fails. Is there any further debate? April.
I wish, I move to amend that we add before the end, before the start of this next school year.
It is moved that's going to amend the main motion by adding before the, before the start of the next school year is. So if, so if the men are making a main motion, Rita, I move that we change this Quincy School District mascot before the, the start of the next school year, is that correct?
Yes.
April, as a maker of the motion, you have first right to debate.
I wish to speak in favor of the motion because that way over the summer, it would give us an opportunity to get new uniforms with the new mascot. And to do a, a full through of like what mascot we wanna change it to. Therefore, I encourage the members to vote in favor of the motion.
Aliana. I am opposed to this, in my opinion, I don't think that we should have it until next year, I think if we figure this out now. Then it'll just be prepared for the rest of the year and we're start, we're starting to talk about it now and we're getting it figured out now. Just so by the time we do get there, by the time this school year ends, we have an idea of what we wanna do. So I encourage my fellow members to oppose of this amendment.
Madam Chairman. I am still strongly against this amendment. I mean, one summer, one school year is not enough to just completely change our school's mascot, it needs to be done. It needs to be considered for years on end and just, this amount of time is not enough to just fully think it through. Thank you of my members to please vote down on this amendment.
Madam Chairman. I'm against this, I feel like we have the time and the resources to discuss this matter now, we shouldn't postpone this until next year, it's just a waste of time. Plus, we don't have meetings over the summer, so I feel like it's a waste of time to postpone it that far, please vote down on this.
Madam Chairman.
Aliana.
I move this is, I move to suspend the standing chapter rule of having our jack, our, being in our official dress during parliamentary procedure run.
Second.
It is pop, it is moved and seconded that we suspend the standing chapter rule of having our official dress on during parley, parley pro runs. All, all those in favor of suspending the standing chapter rule, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it, the motion fails. Is there any further debate on the amendment? Seeing none, we will now proceed to vote. All those in favor of many of the main motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it, the amendment passes. We are now on the amended main motion retreats. I move that we change, we change the Quincy School District mascot before the start of the next school year. Is there any debate?
Madam Chairman.
Fernando.
I move previous question.
Second.
The previous question is moved and seconded. All those in favor of the previous question, please signify by rising. Thank you, P C C U, all opposed, please rise. Thank you, P C C U, the previous question fails. Is there any further debate on the main motion?
Madam Chairman. I am still against this, I feel like we shouldn't change our logo since we've had it this long, like this and vote no.
Is there any further debate? Seeing none, we will now proceed, are we ready for the question? The question is on adoption of the amended main motion retreats. I move that we change the Quincy School District mascot before the start of the next school year. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it, the motion fails. Is there any further business?
Madam Chairman.
Sadie.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
It is probably moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor of adjourning a meeting, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, now the course means adjourn.
So cool.
Okay, who's got the wrap up?
We can be on in.
Dan or I, not that we've, we've had this a minor sidebar and we just realized that that suggestion could go really south if you guys voted to change the mascot. So vigorously.
Parliamentary procedure allows meetings to run better. When members understand how to make motions, amend them, debate and vote. It helps members make better decisions and help the meetings run more smoothly.
Thank you for your time and attention, we hope this helped you better understand the basis of parliamentary procedure, are there any questions?
We're glad we recorded that.
That'll be like two hours of practice, I believe, there's some later on in the year, won't be a long time.
There's also lots of things.
What, what kind of training, like beyond the today training, but do you guys do formal trainings a lot?
So we used to practice like last year, we'll start up again here probably after winter time. Uh we show up to school and start at seven in the morning on Tuesdays and Thursdays typically. And we do practice runs, usually not in official dress, but we do do lots of practice runs, we get ready and we do competitions. Um we went to state last year for it. Um and then we do this, but basically on another level, there's more things to it, more details. And we're all usually more prepared and have things down.
This is my first time doing parli since state.
Yeah, me too.
In terms of practicing, a lot of it is just knowing what all the motions do and when to say them. That way uh during the run, if they make sense and it works.
We also get more practice on our debates, being able to think on the spot and just being able to add more details to our, to our debates and stuff like that.
During actual parli runs, there's an order of proceedings that motions go in, so let's say like, there's convert or refer motions to like. Refer to a standing committee or something, some of those take proceedings over others, usually amendment and the main motion. Take proceedings over most of the things, but adjourn, it takes proceedings over everything, so at any time you could adjourn a meeting. It's super, um, I'd say when I first started, it was super complicated, but after a while, you just start remembering, you know? So I think it's all like a memory type of.
Practice, lots of practice.
I call us the debate team. Yeah, just debate, debate, debate.
So, so is that an open invite for board members to join you at seven o'clock? Okay.
Where would you might see this being practiced in the real world?
In our chapter meetings, like we do, uh we have to make motions in our meetings, so like as we're speaking, there are certain things like money or time we have to go over. So we have people in our chapter that'll say, oh, I move to accept like the money for, we had to do it for our trip to nationals and that was a big thing. We had to make someone do a motion and second it and they're more than welcome to debate, usually they don't debate, cause they don't know what they're doing, but they're always more than welcome to debate.
Um as I'm aware, you guys also um use parliamentary procedures. It can basically just be used anytime any meeting has an agenda that has to get um talked through efficiently. Um so it could really just be uh implemented at any meeting that has an agenda.
Have you ever seen it done at the senate level?
Bits of it, like the details, like you say, yes or no to certain things, or just like there are some small debates and stuff like that, discussions.
I vers, sorry, I personally think that like people that do this competition, when they go into the future, they kinda have that. They know what they're doing in terms of like if they do like this type of things. It's something that you could really carry on with your life, even if you don't do meetings like this, it's just super educational.
Like she said, it also, I feel like it really helped me personally, I used to be a really quiet speaker and. FFA competitions like this is great, gets you out of your comfort zone, gets you speaking in public and personally, I probably wouldn't wanna speak in front of this group. But I did parley last year and I feel so much more comfortable with talking about people, whether it's in class, whether it's outside of class, at like nationals. Just competitions like this really get you out of your comfort zone, get you more better at talking with people.
It's awesome.
Very cool.
And it's good to get your point across rather than like arguing, are, like arguing, you're getting across very respectfully.
Yeah.
You're getting things done efficiently rather than everything's very usual.
One final question, it's for Karen, how do you stay neutral when you actually have an opinion on something?
So I, I'm just, I'm just a very unbiased person, I would say. So like I really, I know it, I just can't let my emotions get into it, so like, I do things like how I call them like in order, so I do proceedings of chairs. So I don't have to like, okay, I'm closer to maybe one of them, but that doesn't mean I'll call on them. So even if I hear like, oh, maybe one of them has like an opinion me, I might agree with. I still don't like, I make sure it's like, okay, they're not like the only person I want to hear from, cause I also think hearing from a lot of opinions is also a great thing. So it's just honestly, I just kinda have to learn to be unbiased, especially doing this.
When does the chairperson vote?
When there's.
Wrecking a tie.
Cause the tie is in the majority, it high fails.
So. So the time I would vote would be, this would be my hat to wear.
She could relinquish the chair to another member, join the assembly and and share her opinion.
And then after that motion has been disposed of, then she can.
What if they they don't wanna take it, because they wanna vote, you know what I mean?
Pardon?
What if they wanna keep their vote and they don't wanna let her relinquish her po- her spot?
I think it's just a permission. I think um, yeah, I think that's getting in strategy levels that are. A little bit above my pay grade. No, I've never run into that before. Most of the time, people are interested in what other people think.
Yeah. Wow, well done.
That was fair. You guys are amazing.
Rewatching that for sure.
On like point five speed.
Yeah, that was awesome and um I was definitely intimidated. Wait, can I just apply something I learned?
Yes.
I motion to adjourn. Is it, is that how it works?
No second, Rob.
I had to try. Thanks so much, guys, that was awesome.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
See you later.
Swearing it's not doing. Okay, is it my turn?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Um so whilst the conference is coming up, uh Dom will be sending out itinerary to all of you this week, uh hopefully by Friday. DJ is driving a Suburban, which is either parked around three thirty, so if you wanna ride with DJ, you can. Um and the kids, if you want to drive your own vehicle, you're more than welcome, except for students, uh well, members, if you want to drive your own vehicle. Uh Dom can help you with reimbursement too for that. So um really excited, it's gonna be a great conference. Uh Shannon is taking part in a session. Around AI with Sean and Camille and I, and then Diana and I will also be on a panel, so. It's gonna be a a great conference, really looking forward to it together and worry together. Um conference week was excellent, um you know, Alicia's. You know, she spoke about that around, all but two students showed up. I I really is the same throughout all of our schools, just really appreciate all of our families. Um and and showing up for their their students. It was highly attended throughout the district, high nineties, and I know even the secondary schools have. Have plans to capture students that they missed. So our goal throughout the district is to get a hundred percent, but. On the week, we get a high nineties, I would say ninety-eight percent of our families um show up, so just appreciate. All of our family support, all the teachers, there's so much work that goes in to student-led conference, having, you know, I. I had mine late at night and the teachers talking and helping my fourth grader through presenting their data and their growth. Um I just really appreciate the time and effort that everybody put in. Um had an opportunity to participate in the Grant County Lead Summit, um that was run by Grant County Economic Development. Yes, the DC Council, thank you, uh with superintendent from Moses, Ephrata and Maluk. And it was just really great opportunity just to share, you know, what what the the common themes and the common elements that we're working uh on throughout the region. Just one thing that um I was just really proud of to share Quincy School District, just the real tangibles that we're working on. Um the real pathways that we have established through our CT programs, through our academic programs, whether it's college and high school. That are, that our students get to experience to help get them into the real world. So it's just really exciting. We're really lucky in Quincy. To have the dynamic programs that we have. And speaking of those programs, on the thirteenth, we have our CT Pathway Night, starting at four thirty to six thirty. Um just recommend that you attend, uh it's a great night just to learn uh what happens within our high school. It's pretty amazing, so. Uh take advantage of that. Um I think you, I I don't wanna take your report from you. Um but we've had some pretty great news as far as a student winning an award, and that's probably in your reports, I'm not gonna take that. Uh and then just uh Board meeting on a Monday night, it's not typical, we have them Tuesdays. Uh tomorrow's session day, just wanna thank you uh to all the service members and and veterans for all their services sacrifice uh that they. Give to our country um every day, so that's all I have. Thank you for the flags.
Thanks, Nick. All right, guys, student board report.
Okay, just like Mr. Burman said, we just had our conferences pass. I could personally say mine went good.
They're gonna pass you?
Huh?
They're gonna pass you?
Um leadership has started to celebrate Dia de los Muertos. They set up a table for people to decorate sugar schools in celebration for someone. And as well as leadership choir and band all helped and participated in honoring our veterans at our Veterans Day Assembly on Friday. And I do believe we had Ms. Driscoll as our guest speaker and then I think ASB and Leadership read letters from like. Time of war, like from veterans, I think, so that was really nice. And we just had steak for sports. We had our state qualifiers for cross-country compete on Saturday. And then winter sports are coming up as well on the seventeenth. They are boys and girls wrestling and boys and girls basketball. And then like Mr. Rigman said, a quick shout out to Eduardo Guerrero for being named this year's Future Technology Leader of the Year. And then our CTA Pathway Night on Thursday. And then I think Anders had something else.
Yeah.
I did the surveys to the Spanish-speaking students and then. By sudden, what they shared with me and I came to the conclusion that volume translator devices will be a big help for them. I thought it could be a good idea to start fundraise, like fundraising to get fifteen, fifteen of these devices. And with those devices, we could also see which parts of the bilingual program could be reduced or changed, which. Which could be save money for the district while still helping the students learn and feel more included. And that's all thing.
So you're requesting fifteen devices?
Yeah, like the pen, the pen, um the translator pen.
Maybe you could come talk with Ms. Hodge uh and I. And we could see with those pens and Mr. Fuller on the tech side of thing, about what those pens do and their capabilities, okay?
Yep, and then I have the reports and then if you want to see that reports, uh I did, I did the reports with the student story AI. And then I can share it with you and then if you, if you want to see the reports. Yeah, it was a interviews recorded, record. Yeah.
Andres, do you wanna talk about the play?
The what?
The play?
Play.
The play that you're helping me put on?
Oh. I think like use the the poofs, right, the. Yeah, it's a fun, a fun play because, I don't know, like a magic stuffs and then I help there uh with the decor stuffs. And then, yeah, if you want to go and see that play, it's so good. It's a good play.
When you go to see, you'll see on Friday?
Yeah, Friday and Saturday. We have both uh two PM, I think, and seven PM.
Good.
Yeah.
Our 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 school's gonna uh go on Wednesday and watch it over there. We're gonna watch. Yeah, this time we're gonna watch the full play and so part of it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the high school does that where there's plays, um usually like it's during a studying period, if your teacher allows it, you can go and watch like half the play and then. They like basically just do it during a class period. Like I remember, I think my freshman year, I went with my fifth period class and it was really good.
I think it's for fifth period and fourth, I think, because I will be there helping in that stuff then.
I think they also bring the middle schoolers to come watch the play.
In the last time was the elementary schools too.
Cool.
Yeah.
That's good.
Well, congratulations, Andres, on the play. I went on uh Saturday afternoon and it was really outstanding and. They have uh like three hundred different props that they use throughout the play. The step, the set is two stories high. With full on moving like two-story doors that come open and close throughout the play.
Wow.
Um they bought and purchased more lights uh that uh to, you know, they have some wizarding duels and. The different colors, it's just, it's really, it's just from just, not even just the acting standpoint, it's amazing, but just. The aesthetic with the sound and lights, it's really cool. It's a really cool play. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I think uh one of my peers is in that play as well, um Annalise, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. Awesome.
Cool.
All you, Chad.
Chad, Chad, actually, drop off the line, so.
All you, Dave.
Being running board, leadership like board.
Yep.
We have Diana. Do, we're trying to reschedule.
So we haven't met for the month of November just yet, um just schedules, but I think we're just skipping a month.
We're gonna try to get November, we are gonna try.
We're getting November, yes.
We're gonna try.
I feel like the end of November is already here.
It really does.
Uh so yeah, nothing to report for board leadership, so we're on to the first reading and adoption.
Chad, just Chad.
You can take it from here.
Sorry, hotel wifi, I'm back. Um yeah, first reading adoption. Do we have any questions on the first review of policies or procedures?
No, I just have an admission. I didn't get a chance to read it. The links aren't working um till this morning and I worked, so I do apologize. I. Don't have notes for the first reading.
And we have, that will, that'll be a second reading in December, so you have plenty of time to look at this. It's time to do your homework.
Yeah.
A lot of them.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's only one or two, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so uh just move on to the action item here, second reading. Any questions on the second readings? Or do we have similar issues with these ones and need to uh push them to December?
No, we need to have a motion to adopt them first.
I make a motion to adopt the second reading of that policy. Yeah, you have to adopt, you have to.
Sorry, thank you.
But for discussion.
Second.
Okay, all right, sorry, motion is seconded, now do we have any questions?
Now we can discuss.
Yeah, I just wanna uh make note. I mean, it is getting adopted, never mind. We had a discussion earlier about policy eighteen twenty-five. Um being referenced, but it's not on our website yet because it has to go through a second reading today, so never mind. Um. I know I briefly talked with Lucina before the meeting related to procedure. Uh, which one? Twelve fifty? And do you have any notes you wanted to share?
Um just this one of the advisory vote, it does mention it down here in responsibilities of State Representative six, but. On like the first part, purpose, on number five, it says, we will not have the right to make motions or vote.
Yeah, so purpose, the, uh under the purpose heading number five, so. My suggestion would be instead of vote, it should just say cast binding votes.
We'll have the right.
So this is what they, this is what they cannot do, so they will not have the right to make motions. Vote, but instead of not having the right to vote, it should be not having the right to cast a binding vote.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, that makes sense. And as a procedure, so we can make that change and put it forward if the group's comfortable.
And then um Diana still mentioned for the terms of office for number four. Does it, I don't know, you should keep one year term because this has decides to reappoint to a second year term. So would that be like four years or two years?
It's two years.
Yeah, so would it make sense to say one year term instead or?
Was one, it was one originally, uh and then, but we always have to serve a two-year term.
I think it's just the way the sentence reads.
Well, you just take that.
Yeah, just removing the last sentence instead of uh to a second term to just a single term.
Okay, that makes.
But that doesn't make sense to reappoint, do we reappoint?
No, you can just put all student rep will serve a two-year term.
And then just send it there.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep.
Yeah.
Those are my notes as well, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other app questions, then we'll take the vote to approve the second readings. All those in favor?
All in favor?
Say aye.
Say aye.
You wanna get the reps there. You think I would have learned from that parliamentary procedure demonstration? With the student advisory vote, please.
You can abstain.
You can, you can abstain.
Um I abstain. Hi, yeah.
All right.
All right, so now, although, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the ayes have it. And. Any unfinished business today? I don't, I don't think we have any, uh any requests for future topics from any of the board members?
I move to adjourn.
Oh, thank you, I second. Thank you so much for everybody that gave presentation tonight. That was an awesome uh awesome meeting. Have a great night. Thanks for your time.